You good? Are you good?
Our local IT expert.
Our local IT expert, yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna call to order at 6:01 PM. And we're gonna start, if everybody's okay with it, with Jen, and then we'll move on to everything else. So, take it away.
Okay, so I'm just here to talk a little bit about special education. And I'll throw in a little bit about RTI here and there because I get a chance to do both of those roles here. So, we were going to talk a little bit about data collection. So, just as a little background knowledge for you, we track student progress really frequently to determine the level of support that students need, both in RTI and special education. We determine if continued support is needed. And if that's the case, what does it look like? We need to meet the changing needs of the students. We need to change our instructions. So, on a very regular basis, we are checking in on students and monitoring their progress and seeing where they're at. For students on IEPs, every quarter, we are reporting on their progress to their individual IEP goals and objectives. And annually, we rewrite those goals and objectives on their IEPs to reflect their changing needs. Or more frequently if needed, you know, if needs change really frequently. A couple examples of some of the things that we do. I just, I have a, I brought along a little bit of a literacy example or two with me. But we do a lot of checklists, a lot of data collection, a lot of running records. Within the Orton-Gillingham approach, we have, you know, red word assessments, which are sight words, fluency assessments. There's three times a year, certain benchmarks that we do within that scope and sequence of the program. Decodable readers, all kinds of things like that that we do within Orton-Gillingham. And I thought, Suzie has talked, I think, to you or mentioned that our phonological awareness and phonemic awareness as a school has really improved recently in the last few years. So, I thought I'd maybe bring an example of what that looks like. So, phonemic awareness and phonological awareness sometimes are interchangeably used. Phonological awareness is the awareness of parts of words that you hear. It could be syllables. And then phonemic awareness is the awareness of individual sounds within the words. So, phonemic awareness and phonological awareness includes things like rhyming, isolating initial and final sounds of words, so being able to hear those and identify those, being able to blend syllables and individual sounds to make words, being able to segment those individual sounds to spell them. It also can involve adding, taking away, which is deleting or substituting syllables and sounds. So, there's a lot involved in this process of learning to read. And all of that that I just described is really done without visuals. This is just hearing sounds and manipulating them. And that really has been shown through research to also improve your reading, even though the visuals aren't involved. So, I brought along a little fun activity for you, just to sort of demonstrate the skill called substitution, which starts out really simply, but it gets complicated as we go. And I'm only going through second grade with you on this. It gets, it gets trickier, really. And kids learn to do quite a bit within this skill level. So, one example of substitution would be just being able to substitute sounds at the syllable level. So, they're taking away a part of a word and then putting another one in, in its place. So, one example, would anyone like to do it with me?
Sure.
Okay.
I've done it before.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, say tallest.
Tallest.
Change tall to big.
Biggest.
There you go. So, that's at the syllable level, that substitution. You just did a very good job.
That's where I can.
Thank you. Yay.
So, I'm gonna do it just to say a little phoneme, like a writing pressure.
You'll see where my kids get it.
Okay, so at the single phoneme level, the initial phoneme, the first sound. So, I would say, say bean.
Bean.
Now, change buh to ul.
Lean.
That's right. Okay, so now we'll substitute the ending sound of the word. I would say, say bike.
Bike.
Change k to t.
Bite.
Very good. And then we can go.
My kids play this in the car, just so you know.
Great job. It's a great thing to do in the car, sorry. And then you can substitute at the vowel level, which would be, I'll say, say slid.
Slid.
Change if to i.
Slide.
Very good. And then the most complicated form of substitution we do up to the second grade level is we might take a consonant blend, take a piece from a blend out and replace it with another piece. So, I would say, say grow.
Grow.
Change ruh to ul.
Glow.
Very good. So, that's, that's an example just of substitution.
I just beat second grade.
So, it's really just a lot of fun. We turn it into games. There's things we can do for just like five to 10 minutes a day. And it's really impactful, I find, for students. So, we're doing that, you know, classroom teachers, small groups, service providers, our speech pathologists, you know, we're all kind of doing this together. And, you know, if the kids are waiting in line for an activity to begin, I might just break out some of these, you know, for them to do. And they, they think it's fun. And it's a game, so they're building their skills. So, that's just one example. And we do track, I've tracked progress with this, with the students. And just, we kind of know where they're at, where their needs are at. So, if someone understands how to substitute, but they're having a harder, a hard time with a different skill within phonemic awareness or phonological awareness, I'll choose to focus on that. So, we're always collecting data to just see where we're at with that.
Awesome. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Kudos to the STEM team.
Yes.
And for the teachers with our, the scores that have been produced. And really, the scores go back to our children being able to read. And so, they're doing a phenomenal job. They really are.
It's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll start with the minutes from last week. I only, I did have one change, and it was just the spelling of my name. It's an IE, not a Y.
Aha.
Not a big deal, though.
I just had a question, because in previous minutes, well, like Ms. Tassadari, Ms. Bishop, Dr. Kelly. But throughout this, it's more like Jackie Tassadari, you know what I mean? Like, there's a switch, and I don't know if consistency is important in terms of, like, formatting.
I think as long as, if it's in the same, consistent in the same seven minutes.
Yeah. I think that's fine, too.
And then, under three, the public input, it started at 6:07 PM. So, I was thinking, and I don't think we need the approximately, the public minutes. Or open up for public, not minutes, public input.
Input, not minutes, yeah, you're right.
For 30 minutes at 6:07, not approximately.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we need the no public input piece or not.
I would keep it, only because there was no, just so people reading the minutes know that nobody brought anything to the table.
That's fine. I was just asking.
No, that's fine.
Jackie, to that point, the only other thing, as far as that, I know, you know, that everything is numbered. I don't know if it was put after four, just because it ended after four, which I get. So, I didn't know what formatting was, if you just want to put that up. Who took these minutes, and thank you whoever did?
Kat Richard, our previous human resources coordinator, took them, watched the tape and took.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, wow.
She did great. I thought they were very thorough.
I agree.
Yeah, they were really good.
So, if we had to adjust some, do we have the access to the Word document to do that?
Yes, she can do that.
Okay.
Yes.
That is weird, though, that there's no three out there. It is public input, three.
Yeah, I think it might just, I don't know if that was.
Oh, yeah, the numbering just got kind of.
Yeah, the numbering is off.
Yeah, for some reason, three, seven, four.
By the way, I thought they were good.
Yeah. Those were just my.
Well, I could, I could actually see why it's, it's Jackie and Ellen, because that's how we talk to each, and she's watching it from the video. That's how we talk to each other.
I just had the question, because I know in the previous ones.
Nope.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Otherwise, I thought they were fine, so I don't have anything else.
Okay, then if everybody's good, I'll make. You want to make a motion? No, it's fine. Bobby makes a motion to.
To pass as amended.
Amended. All seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Did you guys sign the business?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And do we want to announce the public input start?
Oh, yes. Public input can start at 6:11 PM for half an hour. Okay, so, business, manifest and financials. Do we have anything else? You do.
Manifest and financials. Neither Molly nor Michelle could make it. They did want me to let you, let everybody know that in the board pack, they included a current year financial, that there's no comparison to the previous month, given that this is the first time we're reporting for this fiscal year, and that they did put some handwritten notes on the financial for areas.
I appreciated that, actually.
I did, too. I liked that a lot, actually.
Good, to add more clarifying information to everybody. And just that if there, if you have specific questions, you can go ahead and email Molly.
Okay.
One thing I would ask, I don't know if that was a lot of extra work to do that, but that's just helpful, I think.
Okay.
If we get this in advance, which we always do, we can read it and understand that, as opposed to having to ask those questions.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think that, I mean, if, if they don't mind giving us a little bit of something, it might just further avoid, like, long discussions and stuff that doesn't need to be.
That's a good point. You know, let them know that.
Because sometimes it's, maybe it's a follow-up, like, we discuss it in one, and maybe they, like, a question, an answer to a question we had before.
Okay.
But I did like that, actually, a lot.
Good.
Anything else on business, financials, we're good? Okay.
Nope.
Committees, policy.
I was already due the solo, but I'm so glad that we have our team leader.
Heather's like, nope, I'm gonna just hide over here.
Just so happened to do it.
Just so happened to come at the right moment.
I mean, honestly, this was a really nice and succinct, it was basically a level-setting, you know, agenda-setting meeting for the whole year, which I appreciate. We all appreciate it. There were a few policies that were, that were bringing forward, 6.1.1, which is investments, and 6.2.2, workplace safety. The first one is one that has to, I think by law, be reassessed and potentially re-adapted every year. And we propose that we made no changes from last year. And I think there was one slight change done last year before I came on the board. And so, we're proposing that we continue the same one. It's just, like I said.
The investment one?
The investment.
Yeah, I was like, didn't we just do this? That makes sense. Okay, it's every year, okay.
And then the second one, and keep me honest, it was essentially, we had a joint loss committee in place over the years, and that it is legally required to have something in place. And this was essentially just trying to get us in line with what was legally required. And it's pretty straightforward.
So.
I had one.
I had a bunch of questions. I think my, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I just have one question.
My question was, is the old language talks about the principal. So, does it just, did it change completely to the superintendent?
I don't remember that.
Because it was like, the principal shall be respons, in the old language, responsible for the supervision and implementation of the emergency plan at his or her school. But the new language doesn't have any of that, so I didn't know if there was, why.
Is it's no longer emergency management?
If I may.
Yeah.
So, we are trying to make sure that we're aligned with what the state law said. So, I think in, in previous years or iterations of that particular policy, there was a lot more of the, what the procedure would be, not necessarily what the policy should be, right?
Got it.
So, we've got the law, and now we need to make sure that we have a policy in place that's required by, by that law.
Yep.
That have in, have in place. And what we're going to be working on after this is adopted, is what should the procedure look like? We want to have an SEU-Y joint loss committee.
Okay.
In order to do that, we have to get some guidance from Primex, who is our liability provider, just to make sure that we're doing it correctly, because it's a little different than just an individual district.
Yeah.
Right? But I think having, having people be able to come in, they may not see the school every single day, be able to look at it with fresh eyes and say, ooh, you might want to, you know, look at that. That should be fixed, or something like that. So, we're trying to get a multi-district process in place. And we'll be working on that for the next.
So, this doesn't then, so to that point, because that's kind of what I thought you were gonna say, this doesn't reference, though, a procedure. Like, sometimes we have a reference to, like, an appendix of a procedure or something.
Yeah, so we're trying, actually, in our policy committee meetings, trying to get rid of the boards adopting procedures. Because procedures should be living documents.
Yeah.
Something that can be changed. Hey, we just adopted this, and we tried it out. This didn't work, we need to make this adjustment. And having to come back to you every month with adjustments to a procedure.
Right.
Doesn't make any sense. So, we're trying to get rid of what we call our dash Rs.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
You'll see a lot of those dash Rs in policy. You'll see some of them tonight that we're trying to withdraw.
Okay.
And that's why, because we want to be able to make sure we're using your time very wisely, but also having the ability for that document to be listed.
So, I guess my question is, is, but it still lives somewhere. It's not, the procedures live, still live somewhere.
It will, once we have that design.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So, I had a question, because when I read under B, the joint loss committee, the first sentence, for some reason, doesn't sound right to me. The superintendent will cause the formation of the joint loss committee as required by laws, like, will cause applies that they caused it. Just, I don't know, it sounds weird.
Yeah, my, I didn't read the law, but my interpretation was that that was following the language of the law, because there are a lot of lawyers, or at least one lawyer.
I know. It just sounds.
It's a legal term.
It's a legal term.
It's something to happen.
Yeah.
It just, it just doesn't sound right. It doesn't sound very ready.
No, not at all.
It's correct writing, but it sounds more.
Can Jen come back in and fix that? I'm just kidding.
And the third, another question, and most of the other ones had to do with our goal of trying to clean up or make it more efficient and succinct, our policy burden altogether. And so, many of these are included in ones that we passed last year and/or replaced. And so, I don't know if you want to go individually through them all, but they were all deemed to be appropriately addressed in the embedded policies on the right. And so, I would make a motion to potentially accept the recommendations of the policy committee, which include adopting 6.1.1, 6.2.2, excuse me, DFA, EB, and then to withdraw the policies, EGA, EGAB, GBA, GBA-A dash R, IHBA dash R, and the good old IJNDB.
Well done.
Nice work out of you.
But we can obviously discuss that if we have a second.
I, yeah, I, I don't see any, I don't have any power with any of that.
Yeah, I don't either. Like I said, the only thing that stood out was that one sentence read very bizarre, so I'll second it.
Any discussion, Michelle? I don't want to. I learned that this, that flow could be, many of the other districts do it that way, where the person is on the committee, and you can join this, this month. Sort of after they're, each of them are presented, we can make the motion and then have the discussion afterwards. It just makes it a little bit more.
Works for me.
Sounds good.
I'm a team player. It's beautiful.
We could change it if we don't want to, but that was just a, because the, as a reminder, the, these monthly committee, policy committee meetings are robust discussion, and we do have representation from all the districts on there. But we should have the ability to discuss it as a.
Yeah, no, I think these, that this is pretty straightforward this month, so I think that's fine. So, I will second your motion.
I did.
Oh, you did. I will, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, it's been a week. Okay. That was fast policy. If you could make it that quick all the time.
Trying.
Great, I love it. Okay, superintendent evaluation committee.
We have not met since the joint board meeting, where we got the update of where we were with the, how we've seen the goals and have proved them. We are meeting again next week, next Thursday. So, at this meeting, I think we're looking more at the evaluation process, because Esther wants a 360. How are we going to go about that and start that planning process? Esther is not at the meeting next week. It's just the committee.
Is, the capabilities of, it leads into my communications stuff, like the survey. What's the company Qual?
Qualtrics.
That one? I'm never gonna get it. It's just gonna be a Q word. Do they have a capability, does that have the capability for us to do 360-type stuff? Is that an option?
It might be.
It might be?
That's a good question.
I mean, if we're, I just, you know, when we're all talking about data collection and, but maybe it might be something for the, the committee to talk about.
Yeah.
Since it's a resource we already have. Let's save us some money. Look at me, coming up with all the big deals. Now I'm gonna have you guys, I'll spend the money. I'm just kidding. So, maybe talk about that.
Yeah.
Give me, see, I can't second anything, but I can come up with that. It's good. It's pretty good. Anything else on superintendent?
No.
Cool. Look at us flying through this. Communication and community engagement, that's why I thought of it, because we did meet, and we are meeting again on October 24th. We met with Nick from Qualtrics. Did I do it right? Did I say it right? Okay, cool. I will get it by the time we, like, implement everything. He was fantastic. He has a background in, as a super, as an assistant superintendent and principal. We went through all the, of the questions. And this month, we're gonna be discussing how to go out into the community and get all the stakeholders involved in, in doing that. And one of the questions we had was how, as we individual districts, how can we utilize it as well? It would be a cost to us, so that's something we should think about in the budget process and talk about what our needs are for data collection and see how that might work. So, as we're getting into budget season, I said I would bring it up. So, yeah. And that's all I have there. Oh, and then I'm safety and security, too. We are meeting on the 14th, so we haven't met yet this year, but we're meeting in a couple weeks. Principals report.
I'll just highlight a few things. One, I tried to break down our data for both reading and math with IEDY. And really bring your attention to, at the beginning of the year, the students are and should be approaching grade level expectations. So, all of that yellow that you see is typical and expected. The areas that we have on watch and will be working diligently to increase are those red, those red portions. And of course, if you look at our reading, that's a clear indicator, again, what Jen was alluding to earlier in this meeting with all the work that's being done. One thing that we're noticing with Orton-Gillingham, it's not really, it's not a curriculum, it's an approach, is phonemic awareness and phonological awareness. We're doing really great with that. Where we need some boosting is in our comprehension.
I was gonna ask. That was my question. That was my question, right there.
We were reading each other's minds. So, part of comprehension is paired with writing. I mean, you can write what you're thinking, you're comprehending it at a stronger rate. And so, a lot of our professional development that we have on a weekly basis is on writing. You should see a pretty significant increase in writing this year. If we want our students to be writers, which we do for a variety of reasons, they have to write every day. And we have to build their stamina to be able to do that. So, lots of time and energy is going around that, so that comprehension, both in informational texts and fictional texts.
Can I ask a question on that? Because my, my question was, is, are we seeing any correlation to the students? And I'm not asking for, like, specific, but those who are maybe struggling more in the comprehension side, are they also struggling in math?
Typically, where students fall in one, typically.
Yep.
They would fall in the other.
Okay.
Or students who are a year behind, typically, not always.
No, yeah.
And there are some outliers that are super strong in one.
Yeah.
And have a weakness in the other. But if we were to do an average or a range, we would probably see.
I was just curious, because of the comprehension piece, because I feel like, because our math is very, you know, word-heavy.
That's right.
So, if, okay. Awesome, thank you.
I have a different, I think, probably a naive question, but if you think I could just learn it at a different time, let me know. It had to do with writing. I love writing. Writing is so important, I totally agree. I'm just trying to understand how writing, especially in the age of computers, looks like. Like, do we have an idea? What is it? I'm sure it's done very smartly and correctly by our teachers, but just out of curiosity, how does that transition happen from writing on paper and pencil and typing? And is there still a lot of, or any component of writing in, like, let's say, fifth grade that is paper to pencil? Because I know a lot of the testing is on.
There's a law about handwriting, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, the law was passed because there's so many correlations between the act of writing and how we're comprehending. And when we go to a computer-based system, we're asking the students to do a different skill.
Totally, yeah, yeah.
And so, that's why you're gonna see handwriting, a big push, K through two for handwriting. There's gonna be half a year in third grade for handwriting to continue, cursive. And then you'll see a transition some to technology-based handwriting. And of course, then there's always the speak to text.
Right.
Speech to text. But this idea of actually getting your thoughts out on paper, there is, I mean, there's just so much research to back up.
Yeah.
When you're actually writing it down versus typing it, you're using different parts of your brain, and you're making pathways for your brain. So, again, we're, we're spending, if you read your newsletters, which I'm sure you do, you'll see Ms. Sharilla Peppert in there. That's our consultant for literacy and writing. She goes in models lessons for teachers. She's an expert. And then she coaches teachers, and we do our K through two has a time, an hour a week, and then our three through five got an hour a week. Just so we're keeping pace and we're all understanding collectively what the expectation is. You have to remember, in, in our school, our teachers are singlets, so they don't have partners to say, oh, this is equivalent in kindergarten. So, one of the reasons why we make sure that we do at least a K two and a three five is so that there's some collective. I was just talking to Jill, our SEU curriculum coordinator, today about the dream would be to have all of our fifth grade teachers collectively in the SEU, because it's so powerful for our teachers to be able to say, is this what a fifth grader in Stradman is doing? Is this a fifth grader in Lincoln Street? That's something that we've been able to do in math some, and we're actually continuing that work tomorrow. That's half of our day of our professional development. All the small school, fifth grade teachers are together for math, fourth grade, third grade.
Awesome.
If comprehension is better than handwriting, what about the upper-level students who are struggling in that area?
I'm not saying that it's better. I'm saying there are two different.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I'm just concerned, like, if a student is struggling in the comprehension piece, I'm just concerned like if a student is struggling in the comprehension piece, if they're, all of a sudden, we're gonna go away from the writing this way first and then this way, is it gonna make them further behind?
I'm so careful. I didn't make it out of my lane. I wish that Crystal Milks, who's our OT, were here to really get into the nitty-gritty about that. And I will find that answer for you. I don't want that out of the way.
I was just curious, because it's like, I'd like to make sure that everyone's getting what they need.
That's right.
So.
I probably, I should have asked my question more. I was, I wanted to understand when we say writing, that it didn't just mean handwriting. Not that handwriting is important, but.
That's right. We're learning structures of paragraphs.
Yeah.
We're learning descriptive language. We're learning characterization, all of those things.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is an area of passion for me.
Awesome.
Every book that the teachers read should actually act as a mentor text. So in that book, the first time you read a book, and it should be within the class period, like no more than a 30-minute read, you, you've specifically chosen that book to emphasize something to the writers in the room. So, if that person is really great at descriptive writing, the first time you just read the book, just to read it for enjoyment, the second time you go back and you don't read the whole book, you just read a portion of it where there is descriptive writing and say, look at how this author is using descriptive language. Now I want you to model that in your writing. So that's really how that, how that reading component and that writing primary.
Awesome, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
If you wanna talk more about it, that's true.
You know I like it.
And then I just wanna highlight you all requested, and I've already had parents that say thank you for the celebration.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's good of the teachers, yep.
Like, thank you.
It's a lot of organization.
I even wrote it.
And one will be able to join us for those celebrations. One of the things that we're exploring with our celebrations this year is really having the students self-analyze themselves, learning that metacognitive approach of how do I learn? And then reflecting when they're done with it, oh, when we were, for instance, Wales right now is what the third graders are doing.
Yes, they are.
When they're, when they're doing different pieces of it, what part really spoke to them as a learner? Because if they can understand, wow, I do well when I'm pasting and cutting and seeing it 3D, others might say, oh no, when we saw a presentation, that was really powerful to me. Again, it's, it's, that's part of celebrations of learning is them learning what they are as learners. So, that's one of our emphasises as a faculty this year. Lastly, I just wanna highlight, it's not in your report, but it was in your newsletter that went home today. We had a secure campus, and I put out an email about that. We've had a few, we have a few drills still to do. So we have our reverse evacuations to do, our reverse evacuations, we've done our fire, and then the secure campus. The difference between a secure campus, well, I just wanna walk through the three that we haven't done. A lockdown is when there is truly a threat, an intruder from the outside. All of our doors shut externally and internally. All the students stay inside as we analyze what's happening in the building. That is a high alert state. If ever that were to be called, there would be a lengthy email that went home with a lot of detail. A secure campus can look very different and is very different. If a child gets sick and vomits in the hallway, we wanna protect their dignity, and so we shut all the doors. We ask that no one comes out into the hallway. We get the student to the nurse. We clean up the mess so that germs aren't spread. That would be a secure campus. And so, though it seems, that language seems to heighten, like secure campus, oh my gosh, are we locked down? There is a very distinct difference between the two. One, one, the secure campus I think of as just dignity for any of our community members.
And privacy.
And privacy.
And privacy, yep.
Yes, that's what I, exactly.
Yeah.
And so I described that in the newsletter this week, so people could understand what the difference is. And then, of course, our reverse evacuation is when our students are outside. And there could be an animal outside that we've been alerted to, that I need all the students to immediately get into the building. It could be an upcoming storm that's rushing in. That's what a reverse evacuation is. And really, it's a three whistle blow. All the kids come in. I have somebody at the cross, you know, at the drive, so the kids are moving as quickly as possible. And I will tell you, the last time we did our final, not final drill, but final drill on our little window of scheduled time for fire drills, there were other adults in the building, visitors, that were so impressed with how quickly students got out of the building, how serious they took the drill. We got out in under a minute. And it was just a matter of when you're really in this situation, whether you're in a supermarket, in your school, in the mall, this is how you go about doing it quickly and efficiently. So we were really impressed with how they did. Finally, we have, we had one of our students transferred to Swayze, and so we're down one in our count. And we are now at 121 for our student population.
Do we, I know it's super early, but do we have any projections for next year?
We don't have that.
No, I, I know.
Jen puts out a.
She put it out. I just wasn't sure if you had any. Okay. Figured I'd ask since you.
Yeah. Twenty-one seems to be a good number. I think it's in like twenty, right? Last couple of years?
Yeah, usually.
One more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna let you all know, I think you've probably realized this, but each, the the day after our meeting here, this report will go home in paper copy to all of our families. So that they're also aware, instead of having to do the extra step of going on to the website, it's right there. Again, have had comments from families that they appreciated the detail and just being kind of.
Awesome. I love that. Thank you. On that note, are, are the links going, and maybe Ellen, this is a question for you, I'm not sure. Who puts the links to the videos up on the website?
I believe it's Sharon Gullidge.
Okay. And that happens pretty quickly, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure. I didn't actually go and look this month for the first time, so I just wasn't sure. Okay.
Sharon is very helpful.
Yeah, she's fantastic. She's on top of everything. Her spreadsheets are making me very happy. Just saying. Okay, so we already discussed special ed. To old business, I'm sorry, Suzie, you, you're good? Everything was good? Okay, cool. Update on the crosswalk project. So in front of you all, you have some maps. And these were the proposed, very rough sketches of the expansion. And you can see, there's a, there's a red version and a blue version. We're gonna kinda focus on the blue version, because after multiple meetings between Suzie, myself, Ellen, the chiefs, Chris, we have kind of leaned on the, the blue one. You can see the entrance, that, the top part, that would be over by the side dirt lot. That's what that is. Can you tell the aerial from it? Okay. So the new entrance, so as of right now, this would be the bus entrance. And they would come around and then loop back out. And then in that middle part, there's the parking lot, and then the trees would stay, but we're having him kinda quote us both ways if we were to expand it completely and just have that all be parking lot. And then you can see the current entrance to the building would turn into parent, the parent driveway. And then they would come up in, up into the front of the school, so this loop is where they would line up for parent pickup and drop off. Now yesterday we met, that was yesterday, right? Yes, it was. It's been a week. We met yesterday, and we did have some concerns still with, with some of the traffic patterns. So we said maybe the, this, the current entrance turns into the buses only, and then this bigger loop is parents. But what's good about this plan is it's super versatile. So, for example, one of the things I said to the group yesterday was, if the buses are here, they can, and Suzie, I know you weren't there, so it's new, sorry. And we were gonna look for your input as well, is that they could be loading buses in the back while parents are picking up, and it's not, they're not gonna cross traffic, which would be good if they're, if the parents end up using this bigger loop. And also, any parent maybe potentially who's picking up close to the end of the day, but not quite the end of the day, could come into this front lot and not be stuck in the craziness. So what we liked about this was the versatility of it. So, you know, no matter what, if it ends up like this, we could change like who's going in which entrance. We talked about the flow being very similar to how it flows at CMS, where the bus entrance at, once the buses are loaded, they actually stop all parent traffic and let the buses go and then continue with the parent traffic. So that, that, it's still that, only that one spot that students would potentially be crossing, but if we have somebody manned there, it should be okay. It's not on this, this, but we discussed, this, the dotted section of this map is actually sidewalk. And it would go all the way down to this, where the new crosswalk would be over here in this top part.
So it would go down from here?
Yes. Yes.
One of these ways?
Yes, it would go all the way down in, so that it's ADA accessible, it's at the crosswalk. And then, so students, if they're walking or riding bikes or anything, they would come up that crosswalk. And up that, I'm sorry, that sidewalk, and then they would come to the back and follow along the edge of the building. So. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
That was pretty good, right? It's a dream of mine, so I love it.
Thank you for doing all the work. I think there's a lot of planning, sorry, pretty good to say.
No, I just, I appreciate the fact that there is versatility. I am concerned, when we originally saw this, on the bottom doing this loop right here, I, I am concerned about how tight that is to have a lot of traffic going there.
Yeah.
Versus this big loop and this big loop, there's just a lot more freedom. I was, I'm concerned that.
We were too yesterday. That came up. Rich Kane said the same thing. I said the same thing. I was concerned about it, but I do like having that option there for like the one-off parents or the one, or I was saying, you know, we're rushing here as school board to be here for 3:30 and there's a line, we can't get in. So it's a nice option, or it's also a great ADA accessible spot. So we did all agree that this, this was kind of the best of the two plans with some tweaks. But, and then we, we also discussed having them come with a bus to try to make that, those swings and see what. And I actually said, I prefer it not to be one of our actual bus drivers, somebody who doesn't know how to drive this parking lot, preferably, because I was on a bus that hit the front of the school. So I go, it's hard to make that turn as it is. So I was like, let's get somebody who has no idea.
That's what I was gonna say, because even our bus drivers, like, that turn's like really.
It's really tight, but they've been doing it forever, so they, they, you know, it really is, so.
Truly do an experiment.
Truly, if you wanna, truly experiment and have somebody who's never driven this parking lot before, because it's true.
Or have one car coming this way and one car coming that way.
Yes.
Right at that corner is super tight.
That's exactly what we were talking about. So, so the next steps are that he is going to give us more definitive plans.
Yes.
And site, all the site work and everything is underway.
Yes, that's my understanding, to include a quote.
To include a quote, by no later than December 1st, so that we can start budgeting, begging for money, all the things.
So that was my other question, is the money that we earmarked or whatever for, before it paid for this?
It's paying for the, this plus the, the site work in the, all, all the things that lead up to the final quote, the quote.
So that was pretty efficient time, you know, to get this in one month.
I agree.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I thought it was gonna be a lot longer actually. Jen, map-wise, just because I'm, I'm having a hard time visualizing, right now we go up here. This, I didn't realize this existed. What is this right now?
No, that is the current.
This is the current?
Oh no, that's where the tree is. That would be, that tree would come down.
And this right now is a path that is just not really used behind the?
If you actually go back to, that's where the picnic tables are right now? Behind that row of trees. It's not, it looks kinda bigger than it actually is.
I'm gonna go out there tonight, just.
Yeah, it's, so, and that's why we had asked for kind of, if the trees stayed and they didn't do anything there, but they just did the parking here.
Right.
What, what's the cost differential of the two? Because I'm kind of like, if we're doing it, it's, let's just do it. But, we'll see. So yeah, this is super rough, because they don't have, they don't have the, what's the word, topical?
Oh, the survey.
The survey, yeah. Because my concern was very much the front of the building. I was like, two-way traffic in the front? I don't know if that's gonna work, but.
Because it starts sloping.
It starts sloping, exactly. So, but the walkway, that, the current walkway right there, that would go away. That's the whole point of this, is to get rid of that completely.
That crosswalk.
That crosswalk would go away. There would be a new, a new crosswalk over by the new entrance with lighting. We talked about lighting. There actually is a light on one of them already, so there's discussions with the town of who does lighting stuff versus the school. One of the questions that came up, actually, it was my question, is, does the school zone move? Because, and so we're looking into that, because
That's a very good question.
Right now, it basically starts at the, would start almost at the new entrance, so we, it would probably have to be pushed back. We didn't know what the, like, what the setbacks are for a school zone.
So we were researching that.
We're researching that.
Stay tuned.
Because none of us knew.
Has Chris been a part of this? Do I remember you saying?
Yes, he's heading it up.
He's heading, oh, great.
And he'll probably come to maybe our next meeting, or, once we have more information, he's gonna come and.
Yes, he will come as needed.
As needed.
Yes, he oversees facilities now, so it makes a lot of sense. But he's our, he's our contact.
He is our contact, yes.
And I forget, I know you're working with the chief, like to understand things. Is it both police and fire chief?
Yep.
Okay.
Both fire, police, fire, and also select board.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm. They've all been involved. And the state, we met, well, we met with the state over the summer, all the different, there's a lot of them.
Department of Transportation.
Department of Transportation, the.
But there were other agencies represented.
Yeah, lots.
Jen, let me ask one question. Not, not so much the fire chief to make sure that our plan is conducive to fire trucks coming in as needed, but in terms of the proximity to the fire station and that whole entrance, is that?
Yep, we, yep, we discussed that. Yes, Chief Buxton did have some concern. He, he, his dream is to totally shut that off. I don't, none of us thought it was realistic, because not only, we also need it for emergencies. We need that, that second entrance, and also, it just, if, you can't, yeah, there's, you just need to have another entrance to get into otherwise, but yes.
It was being talked about.
Yeah, it was definitely talked about. I think it will majorly cut down on the traffic there, which is good. You know, I even said to the chief of police yesterday, I said, well then, if people still start lining up there, I'm like, ticket the crap out of them. It's like, we need to, like, it's, there's also this responsibility as a, as an adult to not do things you're not supposed to do. So don't park in the fire station, especially when we have a whole parking lot up here.
Do we have any idea like timeframe, like how long it would take to do this project?
No, that's, not yet, not until we have all the site mapped, because they don't know how much like digging they'd have to do, how much grading, all the different things. The other question was about plowing. Who's, who plows? Do you know who plows?
I do, huh?
And who fits the bill for plowing? We don't have, that's not, the school's not paying for that right now, right? Okay. I know, that was on Chris's list too, to find out.
He's looking into that as well. Yes, we can help her.
Because for obvious reasons, it would be a bigger expense, because we'd have a bigger parking lot. So that's something that needs to be discussed too. Where does that live? So. I think I hit all the kind of.
Yes. Have a way to get it.
How's the project manager, my former?
What about the garden bench area? Is that going away?
So.
You know, like.
Yep.
The butterfly.
The butterfly garden or whatever it is?
I think it's going to depend on the site, like.
There is a green space in between there.
Yeah, there is a green space, and so it could be that it's like relocated into the, like, that's green space. All of that is green space. So.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned, yeah.
I'm just trying to visually like figure out this map.
Well, so this like, this right here is where you come in right now to go to the yuckiness.
I can see that.
So the, that's really the butterfly thing, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
But my thought is, is that maybe it's there.
Can you show me, okay, so what would be the bus route?
So that was, that's what's versatile. Right now, as this is drawn, and this was discussed first, was that this would be the parents. No, I mean, this would be the bus, and this would be the parents. And my thought is, we have way more parents than we have buses.
Yeah.
So it makes more sense for the buses to come here. Or even, I mean, I mean, the parents to come here and have the buses come up here and stop here and, and load here.
And then stop traffic.
And stop traffic here if there is still any, because, you know, the buses vary, and then if there isn't, then the buses just leave. And they're never held up by parents and vice versa. So, which I think everybody kinda likes that.
We're just gonna have to put some good signs if we do all that.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Pre-teaching.
Pre-teaching.
There'll also have to be a parent orientation for pickup.
There will need to be a parent orientation for new traffic pattern, for sure, yes. But I think, I mean, logically, it all kind of makes sense. And I don't know, I think they did a really good job with kind of first go around.
Jenny, what happens to this, to the stairs that are currently there? Is that going to get demolished?
Yep. Yep, we're getting rid of the, yes. The scariness of the, we'll get rid of all that, yes.
Make sure we take some pictures before we go.
I know, right?
Yes, good point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay, it's good. More to come. And, okay, so next we have board goals, additional discussion.
Yes, you all have some questions with regards to how you would measure, let's see, was the second goal. Listed to create a system by which the board is gathering information from all stakeholders in new fields on an annual basis. So I did some additional research on this and there are some opportunities and some examples for how to go about collecting some additional info from stakeholders. Such as you could have a community night where you would have a board member at a table during an open house, perhaps. You could set up tours of the school with, with students and a board member. And you could do that like perhaps one hour before the board meeting if you wanted. To offer that up to community members to come in and, and take a tour of the school. So those are just, those are a couple of options for you to consider in terms of how you want to go about measuring this particular goal. In terms of gathering that stakeholder feedback.
Which we kind of did last year.
Well, we did. And actually, I was going to say it was mostly during the day, but then we tried to have the evening and then there was that storm.
Right, and there was a storm.
And I got stuck at Maine.
Yeah.
And my windshield cracked.
Oh my goodness. If we can try to do that again this year and see if it sticks, then that might be a good.
Are there any other, I was trying to think, because we just did open house, are there any other things that we could tack on?
Our celebrations of learning.
I was thinking, I was thinking more evening, why, because for the parents who can't do music. We don't have those solidified yet, right? Because that would be something, if we have some sort of evening, and it might.
Evening school wide event.
An evening school wide event we could tack on, like.
Could we also do like maybe?
Pickleball, yeah.
Pickleball, okay.
We could also, parent teacher conferences, hang out, the parents are all coming in anyways.
Yeah, we'd have to stay here like all day.
I know. Throw out an idea.
Think in like an hour before, before something.
Pickleball's in spring, right? I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
It was in the winter, right? I'm just trying to think, because we have MLK Day in the winter, it might be nice to have something, the other one.
That would be the concert and that'd be a great thing to come to.
Concert, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I like that. If we, if we do MLK for like the daytime and then we have an evening option with tacking on to a concert. I won't be here during the MLK weekend. I will, okay.
And you could add the information to the newsletter for the town rather than.
Yep.
To make sure that you're hitting a wider audience in terms of disseminating the information about the event.
People who don't have kids or relatives in the school can come to the school concert, correct? No?
We encourage them to.
Sure.
Love it.
Yeah.
That was sort of a silly question, but I'd never, not enough.
That's part of our, we would love that, especially with our celebrations of learning. That's a real authentic.
The other thing that we could potentially do, because I've been thinking about this, is Brentwood does a newsletter in their towns, like newsletter.
I was just going to say that, the town newsletter, could we maybe reach out to the person who does the town, that, there's a printed town newsletter and there's.
Library, maybe?
The library, yeah, the library newsletter and get like a, some, maybe something, a blurb from you?
No, I think.
Or from us, or.
I was going to say.
Well, I was also thinking maybe, I was, I was kind of combining the two, sorry. But I was like, just like talking about celebrations of learning and things like that, maybe.
So more collaboratively?
More, yeah, collabor, of course, yes. Collaboratively so that we're giving information, maybe?
Makes sense.
Does that sound to you? Suzie, does that sound?
I would love to bring that to the faculty.
Yeah, yeah, no. Just I was thinking about other ways to get out in front of the town. Okay.
We could also always do something at like the Christmas holiday celebration in town.
No, that weekend is insane.
Well, as it is.
It's Santa's block party in Exeter and then it's the parade and then it's the holiday thing here.
The NPTO helps sponsor the.
Yeah, the PTO sponsors it.
So that's our reason why we couldn't.
Well, that's not a bad idea.
Right?
Well, that's what I'm just saying, like. The other. PTO events we could tack on to.
The spaghetti dinner.
Right.
Ooh, I forgot they're going to do the spaghetti dinner again. That would be a good one. Okay.
Like why are we even at the wheel? If we already have events that are happening.
Great point.
Maybe one of us could go to the PTO, one of the PTO, I could go to the PTO meeting and see what's happening.
I can't, because Robyn's already there.
I know. That's why I was just, that's why I just said it. I'd offered.
That'd be great.
Okay, I think if we could do some things, yeah.
At the same time as Superintendent Ebel.
I can do it. Gladly do, but I think that would be good. Yeah, if we could tack on to some of their stuff and, okay, awesome. Anything else on goals? Okay, so before, we, I know we're staying, that's like a non-meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to like go into non-public or anything for that. Right, okay, cool.
I did have one thing.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just, before I.
Yeah, before you return.
Yes, right.
Ellen, I don't know if you were going to bring it up, remember we, one of the things that come up at the policy meeting was for us as a board to discuss the potential about adjusting what we post for the public in, in advance. So did, were you going to be saying that or should I?
That's right, that's right. Yes, Heather.
Maybe I just, we actually learned some more information about why that might actually cause problems for the public.
I just wanted to.
For the conversation, so if I, I actually meant to send you an email probably. But I will get with the policy committee in the September meeting to be able to provide some more information of how we can actually posting on the policy committee page of the website and not on the school board page.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's just a balancing act.
So maybe I'll just defer the conversation to next month.
Yes, I did recall that we had that conversation and there was to be further discussion and it was not put on the agenda based on.
Intention, yeah.
Having further discussion, yes.
I understand, thank you.
So if we need to put on the agenda, you'll let Ellen know?
Sounds perfect.
Perfect, for next time.
No, it's good.
Okay, so.
For remembering.
I know, right? We have like balls in here.
Representing it.
Okay, does anybody have anything else before we wrap it up? Our next meeting is November second? Okay.